Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Aliria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your dog?
Yep.
Okay. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the July 3rd meeting of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Kallo has our dog from the kennel today.
Whoa, slow down.
Must be female to handle her.
Take a picture, come on, turn around, take a good picture. Our featured dog this week is a Husky Shepherd mix. He's about a year old and he's really cool looking. He has one blue eye like a husky and a brown eye like a shepherd.
Look at that eye.
Great temperament, again, he's about a year old. Look at that, good picture, there you go, show off.
Beautiful.
When's he available for adoption? Today. So, maybe we'll just send him home with Hunter Morrison, who's joined us today. Where'd Hunter go? He ran out. Don't leave the room, you got a dog. Again, he's available for adoption. How many dogs do we have? We have thirty-two dogs right now. Please stop by our kennel. We don't want to overfill, make a great gift for the 4th of July for your family. Come on, guy, let's go. Come on.
He likes it there.
I'll pull up a chair and vote for him here. Come on. Come here.
We'll put a picture up, the rescue up on the broadcast. If this is your dog, let me know. Give me a call, or you can call my office here. Great dog, very calm, gets along with my other dog. It was clean, trimmed, so I know it belongs to a family member.
What kind of dog, Tom?
It's a Collie Shepherd mix. Dark hair with a little bit of tan in it. One to two years old. House-trained, everything. I'm sure somebody's looking for it.
Found where?
It was found out on Quarry Road in Amherst County.
A lot of times, animals don't stray too far, a couple miles. So, the location would be significantly important, so it's Quarry Road area.
Yeah, so it's a male, again, one to two years old.
Madam Clerk?
We have a presentation at 9:40 from Image My Neo 2040, unless you'd like to do it now.
Yeah, you want to just start off right now? Mike, Hunter?
Sure.
Morning.
Hope everyone has a nice 4th of July holiday tomorrow. Several years ago, the Northeast Ohio Sustainable Communities Consortium, which consists of twelve counties within Northeast Ohio, was awarded $4.25 million in a grant from the federal government. And this grant came from three sources: HUD, the Department of Transportation, and the EPA. And it was combined to create a new program called Sustainable Communities. And Sustainable Communities has five different areas of focus: transportation, it's linking residents to jobs; environment, clean air, water, and land; economic development, increasing the quality and number of jobs within Northeast Ohio; housing, to ensure that there's equitable housing choices throughout the region; and then quality-connected places, how can we bring this all together? Well, today, we're fortunate to have Hunter Morrison, who's Executive Director for the Northeast Ohio Sustainable Communities Consortium. He's going to talk about the initiative, where we're at, and where we're going. A little bio on Mr. Morrison, he was the City of Cleveland Planning Director for a number of years. Then he went to Youngstown State, where he was in charge of the urban regional studies and the campus plan. And he spent a lot of research into cities that have been decreasing in population and opportunities within the community, and how to overcome this. So, he's a great resource that we have in Northeast Ohio to lead this charge. And with that, I'll turn it over to Hunter Morrison.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you to the Commissioners for having me on a, I know, a very packed agenda on holiday weekend, so let me get right into this. First of all, at your desks, at your tables, is a brief summary of what we're doing, the process of scenario planning, but also what Vibrant Neo and the Northeast Ohio Sustainable Communities Consortium is all about. We also have these palm cards, bookmarks, about something called Vibrant Neo, which is, or Imagine My Neo, which is our effort, really, to do an online tool that allows people who don't have time or interest to attend meetings to participate as well. So, we'd encourage you to take this home and give it to your kids and your grandkids, because that's really the market that the online game, Imagine My Neo, is all about. What I want to do is bring you up to date on the process of scenario planning and the work we're doing. I also want to thank the Commissioners and the county for the amount of time and effort and dedication your folks, particularly Don or Manchick and my challenger, have put into this. Mayor Brenda has also been a key participant, and obviously Grace Calucci, who's our Chair from NOAC. So, Lorraine County's interests, I think, are well-represented both at the county level and at the municipal level. And I would hope that as we move forward through this, you have confidence that what we're producing is something you can use. Because one of the things we're very concerned with, and Mike and Don bring that home every day, is, okay, this is wonderful, what are we going to do with it? So, right now, we're really in the process of engaging the public in looking at what are some of the trends and issues going forward, the next twenty-five years, the longer-range framework. What are some of the choices we have? What are the options? And what's it going to cost? Because what we're doing is not just a pretty picture, but also the fiscal analysis to look at comparable costs of different ways of developing, different ways of proceeding. We've also been developing tools such as the regional assessment of impediments to fair housing choice, which is a long term, but is basically a way of providing to communities such as Lorraine County and the City of Lorain and the City of Aliria, the sort of information they need to meet HUD requirements, to look at fair housing, but also to allow us to look broadly across the region at some of our broad challenges. Again, the Vibrant Neo effort is to look to 2040. Why 2040? Well, that's the framework that NOAC and the four other metropolitan planning organizations use to do long-range transportation planning. So, when you're sitting at the NOAC Board talking about a long-range transportation plan, you're looking out and making investment decisions out to 2040. So, this is an effort, really, to provide a broader vision of where the future of the region and the four MPOs may be, and provide a decision-making framework that gives you information to make better decisions, more informed decisions, and understand the consequences of choices we make today. The goal is really to create a more vibrant, sustainable, and resilient Northeast Ohio. A lot of communities are going forward and talking about vibrance and sustainability, but one of the things we find as we go across Northeast Ohio, resilience is a key idea, because we're tough and resilient people, and given information, we can manage through difficult times. And let's work those, we've had some difficult times the last ten years. We've employed, we're employing something called Scenario Planning, which is a way of looking into the future, projecting from the trends of the last twenty years into the future and asking, what are the choices? Now, this has usually been used in places that are experiencing significant growth, like Utah or Portland, Oregon. We're employing this in a region of Northeast Ohio, which historically has not seen much growth. Has seen a lot of development, expansion out from core cities, but has not seen a lot of net new population employment. So, we started back in April and May with asking the question, where are we going? Had a set of workshops, including one out here at the Oberlin Inn. We're proceeding to look at alternatives to what we're calling Business As Usual. And Business As Usual has taken, basically, the trends of the last twenty years and saying, what happens if we do the same thing in the next twenty-five? And we're going to be looking at three other scenarios as well, and have a series of open houses, July 29th to August 7th, across the region. And then, go back and try to sort through all of this to understand what is the emerging preferred scenario for the region and for the individual parts of the region. I have a set of third workshops in September. One of the key tools that we're using right now, and again, we'd like to encourage you to go online, to go on vibrantneo.org/imagine, and play this game. It's really a way of thinking, it's sort of SimCity for the region. It's a way of understanding, what are some of your values, what are some of your choices, what do they cost, what are the trade-offs? Same sort of thing you do every day as public officials, working with your constituents. And it's really designed to encourage people who may not be interested in public meetings and all the usual customer engagement, to talk about what they value. What we're looking at right now is four different scenarios for the future, four different alternatives. One is what we're calling Business As Usual, which is what if our growth patterns stay about the same, which is relatively modest growth in employment and population, and what if our approach to development stays the same? And we project that out twenty-five years, what do we wind up and what does it cost? Then, down to the, below that, what happens if we do grow? What happens if our national, if our region's economy parallels the nation and we get the jobs that we ought to if we had our fair share of unemployment? And likewise, population, if the nation's growing by ninety million people, how does Northeast Ohio maintain its market share? Then we're asking over on the right, two different sets of questions. What if our growth is modest and we do things differently? And then, what if growth is more accelerated and we do things differently? And what we mean by doing things differently is factoring in some of the things that you've talked about here, about improved connections to, from Lorraine County to Cleveland, whether it's express bus or commuter rail or whatever. What does that impact have? What about, what's the impact of really focusing on some of our core cities and rebuilding those, such as downtown Lorain and downtown Aliria, neighborhoods in Cleveland, neighborhoods in Youngstown and Warren? What effect does that have? What effect does it have when we work more aggressively and intentionally preserve some of our prime agricultural land? So, these are some of the ideas that people have talked about, let's test them out, let's see what happens. Again, as Mike said, there are several different lenses through which we're looking at the region, the land use, transportation, open space, and the environment, housing and neighborhoods, abandonment, infill development, and the jobs and the economy. And again, these are, these are, this isn't a plan, these are really ways of learning about what the choices are, what the effects are in these six factors, what would they cost, and what do people prefer? And we've got a wide range of choices in Northeast Ohio and a wide range of expectation about what the American dream is, what people want. So, let's get that all in and see where that heads. Again, we've got a series of workshops or open houses where we're going to be asking people what they want. So, I think one of the asks we have of you is to encourage your constituents to attend and to participate, either online or in person, so that when we come back to you, we can come back to you with a good sense of where your constituents are, where people in the Northeast Ohio region are, and what they want. And I think that will help as you make difficult decisions. We are, in addition to the workshops and the online tool, we're doing three telephone and online polling with Triad Research to cross the region to get people's opinions. Again, these are the workshop series, we're going to be at LCC, the Spitzer Conference Center, on July 30th, 4:30 to 7:30. And again, we'd really encourage you to come, participate. These are, these are open houses, so half an hour, you don't have to spend three hours. Come in for half an hour, if you're really only caring about environmental issues, let's go to the Board, talk about it, get your opinions out there. And again, we're going out the second week, to make sure we're touching base across Northeast Ohio. So, that's my, that's my ask of you at this point, is that you continue your engagement as you have in the past. And I appreciate all the work that your staff has done on our behalf. But right now, it's an opportunity to encourage those people who you know in your life care about issues of this nature, we'd like to get as broad a representation as possible so we can come back to you with this clearer picture of where your constituents are, where some of the issues are, and how the region can move forward and how Lorraine County can continue to play a significant role in the future of Northeast Ohio. So, thank you again for your time.
Hunter, question. How long is the Imagine website going to be up, actually be used as information for the final report?
Well, we're going to have it up for the bulk of the time. I think we go into September on that. We're going to do a data draw in about two or three weeks, right before the next workshop, so we have that information. We've developed this, and Grace Calucci, and our consulting team, and the folks at the staff at NOAC and our staff, spent a lot of time tailoring this particular online tool. It's an open-source tool to make sure that it works for Northeast Ohio. It's a leap behind. So, our hope is, if you go on and play it, you may want to use it, or Don may want to use it in some community outreach work. We're trying to develop some tools like that and the webpage and our workshops, as things that you can use in your own community outreach process, so.
Well, what we'll do is we'll put it at the end of our show here, and we'll also put it on the county website for those who find it, to link to it.
That would be very good.
Mike, you can expedite that, correct?
Correct, it's already on the website.
Is it? Okay, how about the media blasted, all the local papers, Chronicle, the Journal have all this as links on their website, possibly? Is that okay? All right, then, Journal's saying yes so far. Brad's not paying attention, so.
I do believe the cutoff date for the, for the end of the month meetings is the 14th of July.
Okay.
So, we encourage everyone in Lorraine County to fill out the report before the 14th.
Right, but again, it will stay open afterwards and we'll do some additional work, but as Mike says, to get the work in for the next set of workshops so we can get a clear view of where people are. We are also, all of our work is zip code matched, so that people, you can get a sense of your constituents in Lorraine County. Likewise, your counterparts in Mahoning County can see where your people are. So, this is one of the things we're hoping to be able to come back to you with.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
Thank you.
My daughter's going to love it, she loves Sims Gang. She used to do that, play that all the time. Do you ever, you know what that is?
Yeah, it's where you make a city or something. No, I'm not real familiar, I know what it is. An idea of what it is.
Yeah.
And there are a number of those bookmarks at the signage tables, so please take as many as you'd like and pass them out.
Thank you.
You guys have a good one.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you, Hunter. Madam Clerk?
Under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners' authorized various personnel actions, as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction, Lorraine County Commissioners.
Welcome back, Mr. Cordez.
Thank you very much, I'm glad that you're seeing me and not viewing me. And I know you're excited, since you haven't had an executive session since I haven't been here. So, with that, I have numerous amounts of issues to discuss, specifically hires at Golden Acres, workforce development, 911. Also have labor agreements from the UAW with regard to children's services to discuss, update on labor negotiations at the Golden Acres County Home and at E-911, and also the potential sale or purchase of real estate. All of those topics are allowable for discussion in the executive session under the Sunshine Law, so it acts at the conclusion of our regular Board meetings. Hey, we go into the executive session to talk about those identified issues. Thank you.
Just to let you know, I have a 2:00 meeting with Tom Kelly.
Sorry.
So, maybe we could take a break and then come back or something?
We'll be done by 2:00.
Oh, we'll be done by 2:00? Okay.
The, this sounds like a lot, but I think we'll probably need about an hour, hour and a half, tops. We could order lunch, though I know how you get a little.
That's okay.
Approved away the reading of the County Commissioners' meeting minutes of June 22nd?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Approved payment to victim in domestic violence, Lorraine County State Harbor, Inc., DBA Genesis House, for $27,021.48 as collected for January 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2013, in accordance with the Ohio Revise Code 2303.201 and 3113.34 through 39.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
George, did you have anything you wanted to say?
This isn't Georgia's.
This isn't?
Oh, it's not?
No. This is our usual domestic violence.
Oh, okay, okay.
And probate funds. Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Children and Family, approved enter in various contracts for provisions at community-based programs for prevention of child abuse and/or neglect for Children's Trust Fund fiscal year 14, effective July 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2014; One Nord Center Kids First Child Advocacy Center in the amount of $8,570 for stewards of children; Two, Ohio Guidestone, an amount of $13,564 for nurturing parent; and Three, Catholic Charities, an amount of $40,524 for parents as teachers.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
I have one question, Jim, I know you just got back. Have you heard anything in regards to the budget with the Children's Families money? Have you had a chance to look through the new state budget and how we're handling that?
Children and Family First?
Yeah.
You know, this is an operation that's been a real exercise and frustration. We think they're going down for last rites, and then we get funded again.
Yeah.
The funding is adequate right now. Let me back up on that statement. We're still upright, but it's not adequate, it's been significantly cut, to the point that we're operating with one full-time staff member, mostly other staff members are part-time and intermittent workers, but we're still moving forward. I don't know that they're going to cancel this program, they've moved it here, moved it there, the funding's changed, I heard it was going over to ESC.
Right, that was our last interpretation, our understanding.
Right, and that didn't occur. I, like probably most people, have not had an opportunity to dissect the new state budget to see the positioning of Children Serv-, excuse me, Children and Family First within that operating budget, but we haven't been notified of doom and gloom again. As you know, that's happened three or four times.
Yeah, used to, just about every time a budget comes around, there's going to be significant changes, and I hadn't heard anything on this at all.
And I feel for the employees over there and at all the Children and Family First around the state, because the uncertainty of continuation has caused us to lose quite a few good people that are working in this environment. As you know, the Help Me Grow program comes out of there, and that's the biggest program we do, from the newborns to three, and it's a, it's a very significant age group to first have contact with families that are at risk and in distress. And hopefully, that program will go forward. Absent that, there is, there's going to be a void in services that's going to be hugely significant, that's going to be hard and challenging to fill.
And we need to take a look at that over the next couple of weeks and see where we're at. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Approved enter into various MEUs for Family Support Services Grant for fiscal year 14, Beach Brook Piper Pepper Pike at $3.00 per hour, effective July 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2014, for youth mentoring services; Child Care Resource Center Loraine at $107.00 per hour, effective July 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2014, for parent advocate services; Guidestone Brea at $96.00 per hour, effective retroactive to May 15th, 2013 through June 30th, 2014, for foster care respite; Home Tutoring Solutions, St. Gin Falls, at $60.00 per hour, effective retroactive to May 21st, 2013 through June 30th, 2014, for tutoring; and the Reentry Association, Inc., Loraine, at $41.67 per hour, effective retroactive to May 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2014, for support services.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Community Development, award various contracts for homeowners to receive grant assistance from CDBG-FY12 Home Repair, which includes a contingency for any unforeseen change orders. Charles Acres Construction, Inc., Loraine, in the amount of $7,139, from Maria Alameda at 3743 Albany Avenue, Sheffield Township, to pump, crush, and fill existing septic system and install new sanitary lateral. Fourteen invitations to bid were sent out three times, one bid was received in the first, two bids were received in the second, and three bids were received from the third, this being the most responsive. Charles Acres Construction, Inc., Loraine, in the amount of $7,133, from Migo Lopez at 3642 Albany Avenue, Sheffield Township, to pump, crush, and fill existing septic system and install new sanitary lateral. Twenty-three invitations to bid were sent out two times, one bid received in the first, and three bids received from the second, this being the best and most responsive. Charles Acres Construction, Inc., Loraine, in the amount of $6,622, for Herman Ren at 3748 Albany Avenue, Sheffield Township, to pump, crush, and fill existing septic system and install new sanitary lateral. Twenty-two invitations were sent two times, one bid received in the first, three bids received in the second, this being the most responsive. J. Kilby Enterprises, Inc., North Ridgeville, in the amount of $6,462, for Pedro and Margarita Marrero at 3608 Albany Avenue, Sheffield Township, to pump, crush, and fill existing septic system and install new sanitary lateral. Twenty-three invitations to bid were sent three times, one bid received in the first, two bids in the second, and three bids received in the third, this being the most responsive.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
Yeah, you got a question. With it being most responsive, did we take the one that replied in the first bid in these categories?
Don probably needs to.
To the Board, no, each time we bid out, it is a clean slate, so we don't look back at the second and the thirds. Now, typically, they will normally stick with their price, sometimes it'll come down a little bit because they really want the work, but it's always that group of biddings to keep it a level playing field, rather than us picking and choosing through the various times we have to go out for quotes or bids.
Let me add a little, on this issue, I received this a few times from Community Development over the last few weeks and sent it back every time. We have a finding in our CHIP program, and that finding was because we weren't able to obtain three quotes on all work, and sometimes we basically gave up and took the one quote so that we could bring the needed services to the constituent. Some of these things were emergency repairs for hot water heaters, furnaces, and so forth. And as you know, I've been going back and forth with the state over the last year or two, ultimately, them demanding that we remove prevailing wage as a criteria because they felt it was a barrier to getting the three quotes. Well, we did it.
And we still can't get quotes.
And we still can't get quotes. The, so I don't believe the prevailing wage was the issue with regards to getting the quotes as much as that we're just, there's small jobs and there's not a lot of profit margin in these jobs, and for these folks to come out and quote them repetitively without success, they're actually losing money, I understand that. But we still have the state hovering over our head with this no three quotes and the prevailing wage, which, again, we removed, but we may not get a CHIP grant next year because of that performance, so I kept sending this back to Community Development insisting that we work it, work it, work it. I will tell you, we are putting more work, and they're trying to get three quotes for a small project, and the expense to us doing repetitively on this is getting very significant. I don't know any other way of going about this, but I will not bring this to you any longer without three quotes. I do not want to jeopardize any funding for programmatic issues in Lorraine County with regard to CDBG or CHIP or any other program we become eligible for. But I, I'm unhappy that the state believed that we had placed an unofficial barrier, and once we remove that, that would become much easier, and it has not.
Just curious, Don, you're able to get the third bid, or the three bids. Did you do anything different?
We, besides sending out the bids again, I had staff making phone calls, beating the We, uh, besides sending out the bids again, I had staff making phone calls, beating the bushes, reminding everyone. We had made it very clear, these are no longer prevailing wage jobs, so that even if they had missed any of the previous conversations or previous correspondence, and we still, after, I think on the one, it was four times before we got three bids, and that was with having other staff calling and letting them know, hey, this is available. It is not prevailing wage, and everything we could do.
Yeah, it, 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 these are, a lot of these are small jobs. If you look at them, and, and the, the, uh, and we don't have the staff to be able to go out each time somebody wants to, to come out, so we have a specific time that the, the, they have to send somebody on site to give us a quote. Uh, and, and that becomes challenging for some of these smaller entrepreneurs in Lorraine County also. We're being as flexible as possible. You've got to understand, our, our, our limitations with the, you know, with staff reductions don't allow us as huge a flexibility as we once, once enjoyed.
Uh, and these are just going out in the newspapers normally, right, for bid?
These are actually being personally sent to each individual company.
We've got, what, twenty-three?
Twenty-one to twenty-three. It depends upon the trade, but yes. And the homeowners, one little thing is this is a contract, really, that we're acting on behalf of the homeowner. Sometimes we'll have a homeowner who'll get a little unreasonable, and they'll strike people from the list, and it gets to such a small list. We'll bid it out per their wishes once, and then after that, if we don't get enough, then we will go back to the homeowner and go, okay, we need to expand the scope. But as you can see on these, the homeowners did not really strike anyone. It was consistently twenty-one invitations going out. So... Did that answer the question, Commissioner?
The amount of contractors are shrinking from the recession. There's less guys doing it, and that's just what happens with all contracting.
Yeah, and we continue to beat the bushes to bring in new contractors. We have brought in a few, but to get them to bid, uh, and then others making sure that they're at least keeping on the list, their worker's comp is up to date, their, uh, insurance is up to date and all of that. It's a lot of effort to...
And, and one of the things I'm doing is I'm keeping this information in all of this work so that, uh, over the next year, when we, when we meet with the state again, I'm going to present this data to the state and, and let them know that their first impression was, was not correct, and especially when we apply for our next chip grant.
Correct.
I want to have this information showing that they shouldn't penalize us in that chip grant, uh, because that was not an artificial barrier. But we'll continue to work on it. We're, we're not going to bring it up without three quotes, and, and you may get some frustrated homeowners calling you that, that need services and want those services and become extremely upset and frustrated that it's taking weeks and months to get these repairs done. But I, I don't want another, uh, finding from the state.
Thank you, Don.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Get some comments, David?
Just two. Um, besides seeing how frustrating this can be, I guess I wonder, these are all within a very compact area. They're all the same type of project. Is there any way of bidding it out three or four at a time? And with this kind of project and this kind of money, I guess I'm curious why homeowners themselves would have input on who's on the list or not.
There's, there's certain requirements, the, the work with the homeowner, and, you know, Don's going to address that. We, we don't add any more work than we're required to do by the regulations. We try to keep this as simple as possible. As far as shotgunning work within a specific geographic area, we found that, that, that doesn't always work well. Um, and, and we're also required to competitively procure, so, uh, we have to be cautious about having somebody come in and then there's four jobs within a few miles of each other, and they get all four jobs.
Well, I guess on this one, it, it would seem to me it'd be worth it to a company to, to say, yeah, we'll do four houses in a two-block area over a period of time, and that way they're not such small projects to bid out. That's, I, I guess.
But see, when, when, when you bundle, it becomes a little more challenging for smaller companies.
To bid the work.
To bid the work.
They can't do.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you, David, at all. That'll be the next thing we hear from the state, that by bundling the work, we've limited competition at, at, at the smaller vendor level.
Uh, and just to kind of expand on one point of clarification from what, uh, David had brought up is that these are actually individual contracts with the homeowner and the contractor, and part of that re, that requirement is because that we are placing a lien on the home. So we are, in this case, acting much more like a bank, and then also as an advocate for the homeowner as well.
Yeah, let's, let's explain that lien now that we've gone there. That lien is a forgivable loan.
Correct.
It, it actually ends up being a, a loan that's not paid on. It's, it's put on as a lien onto the home, and then after five years.
It expires.
It expires. Okay, so the homeowner has to stay in the home for five years to extinguish that. If the home is transferred, sold, or, uh, any event occurs with it that, that changes, then we recover those funds from, from the, uh, final disposition of, of that asset. Uh, so it's, it's, it's a forgivable loan more than anything else.
Correct.
Any more questions, Court? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Acquire three, six, two, seven Canton Avenue, Lorraine, for the purposes of housing development under N S P three. Land Realization Corporation shall convey property to the county for demolition and new construction for sale or rent to households at or below a hundred and twenty percent area medium income or housing that meets the twenty-five percent set aside for households at or below fifty percent. Land Realization Corporation will be in reverse for hard costs and staff time up to the time of conveyance.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I do have something. Jim, in regards to this, how we're taking these properties, I was reading a dispatch this morning. Franklin County and Columbus are doing a tax sale on foreclosed properties to move four hundred homes, I believe it was, over to their land bank.
We're, we're, we're looking at that. We're, we're actually, right now, uh, picking and choosing, uh, what, what's there. Uh, we, we need to work with the orderers office on getting stuff to, uh, order the sheriff's sale. We don't want to flood ourselves with properties, uh, into the land bank, because right now we're in a big demolition phase. Uh, but we have plans to look at the tax rolls. There's, there is more property with delinquent taxes on it than I think anybody has a real understanding of in Lorraine County, and some of those are businesses. Now, you know, you're, you end up at a crossroad. Do you rush in to, uh, and order the sale on the property and put the business out of business? Where, where's the line of how you need to work together? I think we need to look at this, and we also need to incentivize some of these people that have delinquent taxes to get into repayment plans. That's a more productive use than us going in and taking the property if we can get them into a repayment plan.
There are dollars for that.
Yes.
There's help for that.
There, there is, and so I think we need to take a multi-faceted approach to how we deal with these properties in a very logical and sequential, uh, uh, process. And Mr. Metzger and I have had these discussions, and we'll continue to have them, and we'll be bringing back some programming to the, uh, land, the land bank soon, and, um, I think that, uh, we could help homeowners recover and get back into productive use of those properties for, for the taxpayers of Lorraine County. So you will be seeing more coming forward in the future. This, this home was a, a home that was obtained through, um, uh, a bank giving up title to the property to the land bank. We have some N S P money. We've partnered the land bank, the Port Authority, and the Community Development Department that's working the N S P money, uh, to try to put a project together. We're, we're getting ready to send out, um, the specs to have a, develop a bid. Uh, and I want to call it a design build, be, because that has some understanding to mean something else, but they're going to submit a plan to put a certain size house and home on this property. We're, we're experiencing some, some, um, difficulty. It's a small lot, and we're going to need some variances. I'm, I'm getting ready to correspond with the city of Lorraine. We looked at prefab. That's not exactly working well as we thought it would, would cost and, and so forth. Uh, but we're going to try to drive down the cost of getting some of these houses done. I really believe it's necessary to go in and start doing infill. Uh, and we were able to use the N S P monies now in areas we weren't able to before. Um, so we're, we're going to the next level, but we, we have to do one or two of these to get our, get our teeth into it and, and find out where our problems are going to be so we can streamline that process. I'm sad to tell you that we also had, uh, a, a rather large grant application in, uh, to, um, uh, the Department of Development and, excuse me, Department of Labor in Washington to further amplify those dollars with, uh, through W D A, to do the O J D pro, O J T program with the trades and with J V S, and then to rebuild some of these homes that we had gotten through the land bank um, and use federal money, and while educating, um, the youth in the trades. Would have been a real great trifecta of, of events that could have occurred. We, we weren't successful at getting that grant. The, the, um, the letters came out, uh, late last week, and while we had a strong application, uh, we just weren't selected. That doesn't mean we're going to give up. We're, we're going to go back and take a look at it again and try to reapply, but that would have added, you know, a nice cherry on the icing here to bring additional dollars into our community while, while teaching, uh, people sustainable skills so that they could, uh, take care of their, themselves in the future. Uh, so I'm excited about this. If we can get the right variances and we get the right bid from a contractor to go out and try to build a, what I'm going to term, that nobody seems to use anymore, starter home. I don't know when our community stopped building starter homes. Uh, when I was a young folk, a fellow, I remember they built starter homes. They built smaller homes, and just exactly what it said, you started there, and as prosperity came to you or you, you matured in your job environment, you moved up to another home. Today, everybody moving into a McMansion, uh, rather than a starter home. So, given the property limitations, we'll probably, we'll have about a thousand, two, eleven-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot home, small, three-bedroom. There's not going to be an attached garage. Uh, there'll, there'll be, you know, we'll utilize property as best we can, and then if that works, that'll be a model for how we move going forward. But I will tell you, some of these lots that we're getting with, on the demo, are really non-conforming properties from eons ago when they could just about build on anything.
A forty-foot lot was okay.
It was okay. Uh, today, it's, it's very challenging to meet, meet code requirements, setback requirements, and, and et cetera. Uh, and that's why I said this is not going to have an attached, uh, single-car garage. That's another thing. Everybody requires a two- to three-car, uh, garage these days on their house. I remember when houses didn't have garages, and then when they did have them, they were single-car garages. So, we're, we're going to build low-to-moderate-income starter houses, and, and we're going to build them well, and, and we're going to try to reintroduce, uh, uh, people who want to move back to the neighborhood. Just because you're, you're in the low-to-moderate income doesn't mean that you shouldn't have a nice place to live and, and property that you care about in a community that you want to be involved in.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under solid waste, amended resolution thirteen, four, forty-two, adopted May first, two thousand thirteen, approving the two thousand thirteen community incentive grant funding for the year two thousand thirteen. Said amendment is to reflect the city of Oberlin was awarded nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars and five cents, and due to a miscalculation based on the formula, the total should have stated twelve thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-three cents, an increase of three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Mr. Bailey, comments?
Good mornings, Commissioners.
Good morning.
An error was made in the calculations, all right? Uh, was, um, foreseen error. We did not count the paper that Oberlin recycles from their curbside in their mix, so that scored them lower. When we found the error, we corrected it. It's not going to require additional monies to be appropriated, because we always have unclaimed grants every year in this category, so...
All right, just a housekeeping move at this point.
Yep.
All right, thank you very much. I'll move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Domestic Relations, approve request of court funding of thirty thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars from Victims of Crime Act, State Victims Assistance Act grant to provide the salary of volunteer coordinator position for Voices for Children program. There is a cash match requested from the county general funding amount of ten thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars.
Jody, are you here to tell us about this?
Yes.
Jody Barilla, Court Administrator for Domestic Relations. Court is joining us today.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, well, this is a grant that, um, funds our Voices for Children Volunteer Guardian Ed Lightem program. Um, it is a three-for-one match, so the ten thousand dollars actually gets us thirty thousand dollars, so it's a, you know, great return on your dollar. The, our volunteer G A Ls represent our, um, neglected independent children. Um, so this is a program that, um, if we did not have the volunteer G A Ls, we would have to appoint attorneys for those G A Ls, um, so it's a great savings to have volunteer G A Ls. Um, so again, you know, it's a, it's a great expenditure of the funds. We are in a position this year that, um, we have lost a significant amount of outside funding that has otherwise funded our budget in the past, um, both this year and going forward. Some of it, um, a significant portion has been un, unanticipated this year. Um, so I think last year, we had, um, some funds available to actually fund this match out of our own line item budget. Um, but we do not have those funds available this year.
What did we lose, Jody? You said we're losing funds. What are they due to?
Uh, we've, some grant, grant money, some of our, um, grant money. It's, we've lost at least, um, seven hundred thousand dollars from outside sources.
What's the reason behind the loss of grants? They ran out? They don't fund those issues anymore?
Yeah, it's, some of it is just, um, it, some of it is our, um, D Y S reclaim money. You know, they have, their pot's shrinking, and so therefore, you know, what they are, um, giving to the counties is shrinking.
Is that state or federal when you're saying D Y S? Department of Youth Services?
The Ohio Department of Youth Services, correct. Yeah, I'm sorry. Um, so, yeah, federal and state. Federal to them, and then state to us. Um, this is the same grant that the prosecutor's office, um, it, you know, is requesting as well for their, um, Victims Assistance Program.
In the past, we've always funded the prosecutors as a standard.
Correct.
Domestic Relations Court has paid their match out of their funds, so I think that's why it came up for discussion to make you come over to there to see us.
Correct.
It's a, it's a never-ending cycle of other people balancing their budgets by pushing the requirements down onto local government.
Hey, the state's raising their sales tax. You think they'd be able to fund that?
Well, it's not just the state, though. It's also the federal government, and the, the, you know, people, they hear the news, and they're dis, they, they're distant or disassociated with the happenings in Washington, unaware of how they affect us here, and they, they hugely affect us here. Uh, sometimes people just pay attention to the local issue, or the local sales tax, or the local income tax in their municipality. But what's happening in Washington and in Columbus are having huge impacts on, on our ability to do our job right here. Uh, so, I mean, the, if we continue to see loss of all of these assistance grants, um, the money is leaving our community, just isn't coming back.
Well, it's just leaving. It's not going anywhere. That's the, the thing, but, uh, I think what the issue is is people don't want to pay any more into taxes on it, and let's be honest, in Washington, there's a lot of wasteful spending there. I mean, it'd be great to have everything roads paved and gold and that, but you got to get back to reality, too, and Washington's got to do a better job in cutting the waste out of there. Now, the Guardian Ed Lightem, um, I thought most people actually paid the attorney, and I know that it's a reduction normally when you go into a domestic relation. You're looking two to three hundred dollars per hour for an attorney. A Guardian Ed Lightem is about a hundred.
That's true for, um, on the private cases. This Guardian Ed Lightem, um, program is for our neglected independent children. So these are our children's services cases, basically. Um, and so in those cases, all of those children are entitled to guard, to have guardian ed items appointed. Um, we have a hundred and forty-five volunteer guardians ed item. Um, last year, they served four hundred and twenty-two children. If we had to appoint attorneys for each of those children, um, the costs for those court-appointed attorneys would far exceed, um, you know, the, the costs of this grant.
Who is actually responsible for bearing the cost for the attorneys? Would it be children's services, since they're in their system, or would it be?
It would be the court. Uh, that would be court-appointed fees, just like any other court-appointed. Well, it would actually be the, it would actually be the.
We couldn't charge.
It would actually be you.
We, uh, we couldn't charge that back to children's services since it's an active case?
No, because, uh, it, it's court-appointed fees, so...
Okay. I'm just...
No, I understand. I know, we're shifting. I understand, but no.
I want to make sure. This is only for the, the children. It's not for, uh, cases where you have, um, grandparents or parents that are getting, uh, attorneys as well in the case.
No, no. These, this is strictly for the, the G A Ls themselves, the guardians ed items themselves who serve the children.
Under the age of eighteen?
Correct.
It's a direct program. The courts have had it for years. I'm very familiar with it.
These guys do great. They do great work.
And no cost. I mean, it's, hate to spend the ten grand, but the return on it versus the hours. At least thirty-five dollars an hour for the in, gen attorney fees now in domestic?
Yes.
Okay, so you can burn through ten thousand dollars in three hundred hours of work, and that wouldn't cover four hundred and twenty-two kids.
Right.
Yesterday, I sat with Jody and Judge Boros and Judge Swinski, and we talked about this and other issues, and if you caught that, seven hundred thousand dollars that they're not going to get next year, which means that seven hundred thousand dollars that we're going to have to find... year, which means that's seven hundred thousand dollars that we're going to have to find to give them in their budget. Their budget's not increasing, it's staying the same. It's just the money's not coming from grants, it's going to have to come from us. So I asked if it's possible if we were allowed to levy a tax for the detention home. And we talked about it yesterday. Judge Boros called me back and said, "We can put a sales tax on for the detention home." And what I was thinking was maybe like a bifurcated tax that would fund both the jail, because we're like two-point-two million for the detention home?
Correct. The cost of the detention.
Plus, what do we pay? Six million dollars?
Four million.
Four million dollars out of our general fund for the jail?
Yeah, it's decreased a little bit because sales tax revenues have been up. So the assistance received from our other operating half percent has decreased. But I think at its height, it was close to six million when receipts were way down.
Yeah, two years back, correct. But now it's about four-point-three, I think is what we budget, but we lost on that.
But still, I mean, we're between, you know, domestic, the other courts, the veterans, everybody coming in and asking, needing more money for their budgets next year and we have no way of figuring out how we're going to fund those things. We're going to have to think about something. Maybe if we did a quarter percent, bring in seven million, it might be too much for just the jail and the detention home, but we're going to have to do something.
I remember we, in two thousand and eleven, when we did put the sales tax up, it was for criminal justice.
Right, well, this would be more specific.
Well.
Criminal justice, a lot of people don't really realize what that exactly entails, but when you say jail and detention home, everybody knows what that is.
Well, you can say whatever it is, it's general fund dollars. And that's why I think.
No, it would be.
No, it would be designated just for that.
It doesn't, under sales tax, it becomes a direct funding mechanism.
Right.
It's a line item.
You have to use it for that.
Similar to the jail sales tax now, the jail sales tax have a quarter percent, been on about, been since ninety-five. It was passed ninety-six. That's directly to the jail.
Took five tries.
Took five tries to get that to fund the jail. That's not general fund, it's a separate item.
You can use a portion of your piggyback tax, commonly known as the piggyback tax, and you can restrict that piggyback tax to a specifically designated purpose, which is basically an understanding with the taxpayers of what those revenues would be directed to.
That was in ninety-five. I think times are a little scarier now than they were back then as far as, you know, the violence and the murders and, you know, the drugs and all the things that are happening now seem a little bit more intense than they did back in ninety-five. Things were kind of, you know, still pretty decent back then.
The last time that there was a sales tax change in Lorain County was after five tries for that quarter percent restricted to the jail because they had a revolving door of people going in.
And that's what we're getting now, Burge.
And leaving. And that was, you know, what, how many years ago now? Almost.
Eighteen?
Things are a lot different now.
There were lawsuits then, too, weren't there?
There was a lot of lawsuits on how many people were allowed to be at the jail and so it was catch and release.
Right.
And that's kind of where we're at now, like for the drugs especially. Judge Burge had mentioned to us, you know, "Do you want to spend a hundred dollars a day to keep somebody from smoking crack?" No, they don't. People don't want to spend that hundred dollars a day, but if they know that that person's going to break into their house and steal from them to get that crack money.
It'd be cheaper to buy them the crack than at least to keep them in jail.
Exactly.
And the, here's the thing, back in the mid-nineties, we were running a very dangerous operation of jail. We had the, we were only keeping the worst of the worst prisoners in that jail that were murderers and we were running a maximum security prison, for lack of another term, as a local jail. We were placing all of our employees in significant peril and jeopardy and we're back to those times again.
And the police were just complaining in the paper the other day about, you know, "We're picking up these bad guys and then you're not getting, you know, put in jail." So, I mean, we have a problem.
Well, back in the nineties, I will tell you that, everybody knew that a quarter percent, a quarter percent would not alleviate the complete problem, but the taxpayers had no appetite for anything more and it took a long time to convince them of that.
Well, this is something that we need to talk about and the judges offered for you guys to come and sit with them also. I know it's been a while since, Tom, you've been there and.
I was there earlier this year, yeah.
Oh, okay.
I was there some time this year, too.
Right. So if you want to, you know, make an appointment or she'd be more than happy to.
Well, I think we're running out of time, so just not come here because it's July. We have to be, by August, it would have to be before the elections.
Theresa, you had the schedule. I asked you to prepare a schedule of events.
Well, realistically, the seventeenth, next week or the weekend, we have to start.
In order to.
Do we have to have public hearing?
Yes, in order to meet the timeframes. Madam Clerk and myself discussed this and she mapped out a last timeframe scenario.
Give you one week.
Right.
Only.
Right.
Because it's going to be in board of elections on August seventh.
Okay, I knew it was around there.
So we just started, Jody.
I'm just looking for solutions.
My concern with it, though, we have been talking about putting another levy on, you know, with the crime lab.
Right.
And to go through, put the crime lab on there and then put a sales tax increase as well, I think that may hinder the voters from supporting either one.
Well, I would say this one would be more important at this time. I mean, where are we going to come up with another seven hundred for them? And how many asks have we had that are, you know, more than what we're spending this year?
Well, you know, if you're going to talk about what's going to be on the ballot, let me tell you that, FTA is all over us with regard to transit funding. They are really getting pugnacious about our rolling stock, about the transportation center. They're asking for reports, they're asking for information. We are running out of time. And so the transit levy didn't succeed in May. I told you that I thought we needed to continue to try to put it out there. It may come to the point that we don't get a transit levy and we don't get any further assistance that we're going to be out of the transit business. FTA's been pretty tolerant, but things are starting to domino effect on us right now. So I need to inform you that I have correspondents on my desk that that is significantly demanding from the FTA.
Again, if we continue to add more and more levies, it's a higher likelihood that all the levies will fail. So.
Well.
People only have so much money.
Right, I know. And they have to decide what they want to spend that money on. That's why we need to put it out there and let them know.
Well, and just a little food for thought on the detention homes, our current costs are two-point-two million dollars. Our current staff ratios under our licensing is one staff member per twelve juveniles. There is a proposal that by October two thousand and seventeen, that that could change to one per eight. So one staff member per eight. So that potentially could increase our costs, depending on how we're able to meet that. So, but, I mean, we have a few years to deal with that, so.
I'll make the motion to approve this.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jody.
Under the engineer, approve an enterance LKA agreement with ODOT for widening and reconstruction of Center Street, State Route three oh one from Forest Street to North Corporate Limits in Village of Mulgrange. Authorize engineer to execute on behalf of board of prosecutors approval as to form.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Approve an enterance subdividers agreement with Columbia Reserve LLC for Columbia Reserve subdivision phase two and three, Columbia Township, and Rich Baron is the developer.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Authorize engineer to submit a preliminary application to OPWC for emergency funding in the amount of one hundred and fifty-two thousand eighty-four dollars for total construction costs of one hundred and seventy-six thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighteen cents and local share provided by Forest County with county forces and equipment being utilized to repair a slope failure along east side of Columbia West River Road, Columbia Township. Authorize engineer to execute on behalf of board with prosecutor's approval as to form.
Mr. Glaber, any comments?
No, actually, we've already been, the state has approved our funding. This is a formality that we.
Also moved.
Second?
Any further discussion? Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the prosecutor, authorize payment of a twenty-five percent cash match for the county general fund in the amount of twenty-three thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars for the victim witness program effective October first, two thousand thirteen through September thirtieth, two thousand fourteen. The salary and payroll expenses of one full-time victim advocate and two part-time advocates is ninety-four thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars and the Attorney General Ward was in the amount of seventy thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Do we need any more discussion on this since Jody basically answered it also moved then?
You don't want?
Yes, there's a board of any more.
No, okay. I'll second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez?
I have no further comments this morning. Thank you.
Mr. Ennis?
Commissioners, if we have time, I can give you some updates on pending litigation. It's not vital that we do it today, but in case we have time, I'll ask that it be part of the executive session.
Commissioners report.
Well, hopefully, everybody's going to have a safe and happy holiday tomorrow for the Fourth of July. As I said, I met with the judges yesterday. Friday, I attended the Valor Home meeting at Saint Joe's that they had regarding their new facility. It's all bought and paid for. It's theirs, they're looking for volunteers to help tear down the ceilings, drop ceilings. They're going to be putting in some, what are they called? Sprinkler systems, man, I had to, you know what, I couldn't think of it. So, very nice facility. I did get a chance to go over there and tour that and it's going to be really, really nice. Sunday, I attended a fundraiser for Fidos Companions over at Mulligan's in Avon Lake. Fidos are the ones that are helping us with our spay and neuter program and Elite nine-one-one is our, Chuck Stella is the guy that's doing, or transporting for those dogs that are getting spayed and neutered. And he also does training. Any dog that gets adopted from our dog kennel, he will give free training, you know, basic training for your dog. So I think that's something that people need to take advantage of and for some reason they're not. I don't know why. I think if I got a dog from there, I'd certainly want my dog to be trained, so don't forget about that. Get your dog licenses if you haven't gotten them. And we just had a flyer, which I've never seen before, said if your dog is like three months or younger and you're just getting your dog, you get half off of your dog license in July.
Well, I, you know, never, never let a good PR opportunity escape you. That's been in the code forever.
Oh, well, nobody's ever brought that up before.
Well, it's, it's been out there. And when people apply for their licenses, you know, if you have a certain window of opportunity for, for that. So, you know, somebody's just now putting it out there with the ability to be recognized.
Well, that's good. Glad. People need to know that. Get fifty percent off of your, the fee, right?
And there goes our revenues.
Yeah.
We, yeah, we had a great amnesty month, didn't we?
Yeah. Not so much. All right, that's the end of my report.
Yeah, busy week. Spent most of the day at Nauvoo on Friday. Our bylaws committee met, trying to just go through, we'll have a preliminary presentation on the twelfth. Tom, you'll be there to see and then probably move forward in August with more of a hope for a September approval on some of the changes, a serious redo. But it's been fifteen years since the bylaws were done, so I guess we're due. Also, the International Festival was this weekend, very nice turnout. They did a very nice job. The parade was crowded as usual. Nice job by the Macedonian community as a spotlight community. On Monday, Mike Chaloner and I held a conference call with the principals from Leadco Lake Area Energy Development Corporation, the offshore wind project. We'll be doing a presentation in the next couple of weeks on a power pledge. Avon Lake's already had a presentation on it, but it's asking governments, county-level municipalities, and other entities, colleges and such, to make a pledge to purchase a certain amount of offshore power going forward. When the project is up and done, it's part of our four-and-a-half million dollars that we were awarded by Department of Energy last year.